Listen, City Council, I'm getting to order. Uh, please stand and pledge allegiance. Please.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilors. And this is for the public's benefit, if this is your first meeting in a while, I'm going to read a statement from Jim Kleberg's family. He's one of our city councilors. He will not be joining us today.
Oh, he isn't locked today.
Uh, Jim Kleberg and his family are dealing with a complicated medical issue, and I appreciate your thoughts and prayers. At this point, Jim will not be participating in city politics for a few weeks. We will update you when we have more information, so just for your benefit. We'll move on to our active agenda resolution 2023-23, considering amending resolution 2023-19 to authorize the City of Lewiston to expend up to $3 million for the design and construction of a solution for water storage in the high zone of the City of Lewiston's water system without complying with formal bidding procedures. This is an action item, and we have our Public Works Director here today, Dustin Johnson, who will introduce us to the subject, and then we will move into the discussion. Director Johnson?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. So, as the mayor's already outlined, the two items on today's agenda are essentially attached. They're all part of the High Reservoir situation that we're trying to fix. And so, I am going to do my best to kind of outline the time and kind of generally where we've been and where we're going. Um, there we go. Okay. Uh, some of this stuff for the council, and maybe members who have seen this before, this may be a little bit of repetitiveness, but I think for anybody who may be watching this for the first time, I'll try and do my best to give you a high-level outline of what's happening. So, generally, January 18th, the loss of the High Reservoir. That was a situation that we're, I think, most of the community is aware of. January 19th, so that was essentially the next day. That was Resolution 2023-6. That resolution was issued, it was a similar, it was emergency declaration, and that allowed city staff, and the purpose of that was to get the necessary parts and materials ordered and installed in order to remove that reservoir from the rest of the system. So, that was in the order, I don't have the number in front of me, but I believe it was a couple hundred thousand dollars. That was only to mitigate the emergency. That was not to fix the problem that we're in, other than to get us off that boil order. So, fast forward to January 26th, when those parts and materials were installed, the system was balanced out, the reservoir was removed from the system, and the boil order was lifted. More or less, half of the operations staff went to work trying to balance out the system. The rest of the staff, including the engineers and myself, started working with our contract engineers and our own technical staff to find a solution to how we're going to address the loss of the High Reservoir. So, by February 23rd, a technical update, it was generally, some of these documents, I mean, they were technical, but they weren't necessarily memo because the turnaround time had to be so quickly. That technical document outlined possible scenarios of mitigating that reservoir. Those included using the old reservoir, temporary holding tanks, permanent holding tanks, steel tanks, concrete tanks, basically everything out there. This document was reviewed as far as, you know, many of these scenarios, such as the steel tanks, the lead time for those steel tanks were beyond this summer and into this fall and winter, and so the likelihood that it was even something that we could consider, it fell off the list really quickly. But two, based off of this February 23rd technical update, we went down two possibilities. One was called a Maju Tank, which is basically a temporary holding tank, only temporary in nature. The other one was to investigate reusing the High Reservoir and addressing what was damaged in the breach and bringing it back online. Moving forward to March 27th, at that point, this council approved Resolution 23-19. That was a document, scope of services, there's two parts to that, and that was the recommendation to reuse the High Reservoir. There were some preliminary designs for considerations for overflow, piping, and tying it into the system, but there was a small component, I say small, $400,000 in order for some minor demolition investigation and further design to look at how that High Reservoir could be reintroduced to the system. So, that was also an emergency declaration. The two components of that, that was in the packet, one was to allow the mayor to not exceed $400,000 for his signature, and that was to cover the investigation, early demo work, and then the rest was to not exceed $2 million, and that was to cover the improvements themselves. So, soon thereafter, early April, cranes were brought in, demolition teams were brought in, engineers were brought in, and started looking into that. With that work, on April 17th, I was in my office at 455 when I received a call from my B Engineer in Boise, took the call in my pickup in the parking lot, and they notified me that the investigation upon the work that they did in the demo, they were not able to fulfill what they thought they were going to be able to do, which was to reuse the reservoir. Whether it was the condition, essentially, it was an old reservoir, it was 100 years old. Anything new needed to be met current standards, and so trying to tie into that system and its condition was not going to be feasible in the schedule that we had. So, at that point, April 17th, we had to move forward with a new plan, not necessarily a new plan, a modified plan. May 3rd, which is today, is that modified plan. So, this is the third emergency declaration that is before you. What this third one does is now that we have a more vetted design, a scope of services, a schedule, we can take it to you. There's, I'm going to be honest, there's good news and there's bad news. The good news is this solution that we have, which I think we've already identified out in the public, is to take the roof off, line the existing reservoir, patch the hole that's in the side, line it, and put in a floating cover on that. The estimate on that is $2.4 million plus what they've already spent. So, our request is to approve a resolution that would allow us to procure those services without the typical procurement processes of bidding and RFPs of those nature to get this moving. The engineer and the contractor is ready to hit the ground essentially tomorrow to get this project moving. So, that is what this does. This expedites the procurement process, allows us direct negotiations that we have been having, put those into a contract, and establishes a limit. The limit for this new one is $3 million. I said the good news and the bad news. The bad news is it's $3 million. Previously, the reusing the reservoir without taking the roof off was $2 million, so it's an extra million dollars. The good news is it is a more permanent solution. It gives us time to look holistically, not just what High Reservoir functions as, but looking at where growth is going, you know, the demand of the system. We have a new water treatment plant, which operates completely different from the old treatment plant, so allows us, gives us time, and again, finding funds, we'll talk about that later, finding funds to fix this in a holistic solution. The warranty for the floating lid is 20 years, so, you know, that gives you an idea that this is not a Band-Aid, but it buys us time to find how we, down the road, need to address any deficiencies that may or not be in the system.
Can I?
Yes.
Can I interject? Um, when we talked about the repair to the blowout, I had a little difficulty finding that in the proposal, and it's probably because I don't know terminology, so I just want to make sure I understand that it's in there and how it's described.
It is, and that's what's a little unique in that the roof and everything, the liner, that was, that's all new, that's where that million dollars is coming from. That repair and overflow, that was all part of our original design, so that hasn't changed.
Okay, so, and I was wondering, so the bullet points, reservoir slab repair?
Yep, that's that.
Is that, is that, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. That's, when you said that, I was like, okay, that's the one I didn't, I hear slab and I think concrete slab, not?
It's just tilted.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Uh, so what happens if, this is kind of a replay of what happened, what we ran through in the last emergency declaration. What happens if we go, no, we would have to go back, we would go through the standard procurement processes, there's absolutely no way this line, this would be in, the reservoir and the water system would be online anytime for this irrigation season, and we would just have to work with the public and our water team to continue with the irrigation restrictions and just get by it how we can. That is essentially all I have for the emergency declaration.
Um, just so the question and the answers out there in the public, so I have two questions, like, if we went through the normal process of bidding, and what would that timeframe look like?
Years. Uh, I don't want to oversell it, and the example I used was community-derived reservoir that's out by the high school, and so, you know, that was identified in a master plan, so not, not, we already have, we have identified need, but it would probably be, it would be a push to get it online for next summer's irrigation season, so we would be looking probably fall of next year for it to be completed.
Okay, and then just for transparency, why did we pick this first?
Uh, the two, so this is the design-build team that was working on a water treatment plant, IMCO Construction and Stan Tech Engineering, and they were, you know, if you look at the pictures, that seemed to be cycling out, they, those are the people looking into the hole the day, they were onsite, and so they are two firms that have a lot of resources and obviously have a lot of knowledge of our water system, and so they were, we initially, I have the contracting ability for a certain amount, and so we immediately needed their assistance just because of the emergency, and that's when that, and then that second declaration came in, and so they're, those are the ones we selected because they have so much knowledge with our water system and how that functions.
I will like to refer yourself, we just get to speak freely. Oh, not, maybe, maybe not freely, I'll try to restrain myself. Uh, no, kidding. My concern with that first vote was that it was a gamble, and I think what I like about this particular one is 20 years. 20 years is, to me, still not long-term, but it gives us, and I think that you used the right word, holistic, right? I mean, we can now look at what does that need, and I appreciate, because I know I did recognize that the company to know, that somebody that knows our water system, which I do feel like, and I appreciated your presentation on Monday, to say, this is, like, we're an uphill, right? Like, and so trying to get people to understand that it's not that we can't get you water, it's that we can't get you water because of redundancy and pressure, and I really appreciated the public, you know, coming with, you know, possible solutions, and so I've had conversations, like, why can't we go every other day? Well, that then allows our highest water users, right, to then every other day, and it's not an exact science of, they do that and we blow everything. So, am I right in, as I read through this, this gives us that ability with the July 31st, that's their proposal, and I think you said on Monday also, that it, that was not a conservative, that was like a, it's always a guessing game, but that's, that they didn't want to be, oh yeah, we can get it done by this time, it was, with everything that we've got going on supply and demand. So, um, I just want to reiterate again, we were asked to do $400,000 in the initial, we did that, that gave us a study that gave us the answers to our questions of whether or not we could do a quick fix. Then we did $2 million because we had a proposal for a fix, but through that investigation found that $2 million, if we spent it in the way that we thought we could, was not only a gamble, but more than likely a complete failure in our water system.
We were not going to be able to meet current, without doing more work, more, you know, between the roof structure, we weren't going to be able to tie in anything and meet current standards. And I'm not going to speak to it because I didn't draft a report, that was a structural engineer that came there, but it was very obvious at that point that we were going to have to spend a lot more money and a lot more time that we didn't have to get it to where we needed to be. And so this solution says, well, let's just scrap that and bring in our own roof.
But instead of a gamble of $2 million, not a gamble of upwards of three total, $3 million total, we get a 20-year to where we can slow our roll, get everybody back online, hopefully prevent some things, come up with some creative solutions to make sure our public are taken care of. We don't have, it's not a guess, this is, this is going to work.
Yep.
And I do like that it's the company that, I think that's very imperative for certain people in the room that write for local news to know that this company understands our entire system.
I mean, it go, I mean, I will go out on a limb and say, if this happened without this team onsite when it happened, we would be in a completely different, I mean, we would be.
Perfectly aligned.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The only thing I would want to add to that is, I look at it in a historical context, when, and these both low and high reservoirs were built in the 20s, I'm going to go out on a limb and say, probably there were zero customers that lived uphill from those reservoirs.
Right.
And so, now, here we are, 100 years later, and, you know, don't, you know, look at the silver lining, this gives us the opportunity to say, let's balance our system, let's strategically get out in front of this so we can use gravity instead of trying to pump everything up the hill.
I saw something in here about kind of liability.
I'll get into that contract, specific to the contract in the next.
Okay.
Councilors, you have Resolution 2023-23 before you.
I would like to be no issue, but I have one more question, and this is just, I want to make sure that I'm reading this correctly, because it's 100 years old, and I do see some exceptions here. Um, shoot, I had it, and then I moved away from it. There was a mention of that scary, scary word, oh, exclusion, not exception, exclusions, and there's the word that everybody seems to go, lead and/or asbestos abatement and disposal. Do we have any worry that that could be something we have to deal with?
I did get, I did get assurance that they have already done looking at that, and they did not find that. There is, I believe there is a small contingency built into the contract for that, but that would be a change order, there's a small amount, but from my understanding, from what I've heard, that there is no expectation for it.
And that was, that word always sticks out, and we want to make sure, you know, that's something that's.
I appreciate the effort and everything that you've dealt with, the stress and everything of this happening. I, I'm grateful that we have a 20-year period to where we can be moving down the road with possible solutions, and, but I think, I think it's extremely important that everybody is fully aware of where the money's coming from, how we're going to deal with it, because everybody's on board. I mean, the things that I've been hearing, once they understand, and I think your presentation Monday, I wanted this to be on the record, was very illuminating for a lot of people, and I think it needs to be spread so everybody can see it, be aware of that, and I hope that this, I hope that today's meeting is also put out for people to see, and I just want to tell you how much I appreciate it, and I would make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-23. I just got caught.
I'll second it, then. And, I do.
If the move by Councilor Towesley, second by Councilor Littkey to approve Resolution 2023-23, is there further discussion?
If I could just, again, I think this has been something that, for me, it's always nerve-wracking to ask for emergency funds and to not have, I mean, at that point in time, it was like, we wanted to prevent water restrictions, and I get, I think that's where, if I could implore anybody to watch a meeting, to truly see the full discussion and not rely on an online article or even a newspaper, and that is not a judgment against, you cannot put a full transcript of a meeting, but to understand where we were coming from, and I think we were all a little nervous, I think, it costs a lot of money, but if this gets people to protect their way of life, their, our summer, I mean, we all enjoy the NIA, we all enjoy all those things. For me, to know that this gives us time to make really good long-term decisions, which, again, puts us in a position, we need to make those really good long-term, I think that I'm committed to having those conversations, and I do think, and I will echo Councilor Towesley, and that I think that presentation on Monday really did help. I think that if all of us councilors are engaging in those emails and being honest with the people that are truly concerned about, that it is an investment to have your, but I also feel like this is a chance for us to think outside the box, to come up with creative solutions to get through this, and it may lead to the City of Lewiston making some really great leaps in how we want to move forward, and so I want you to know, from me to you, you did not ask for this, I didn't sign up for this, but I did, right? When you run for public service, that's what you do. And so, I'm committed, as I think you are, in making sure that we move this forward. So, I am 100% for this. Wish it was cheaper, guess what, I wish gas was cheaper too. So, we've just got to do what we've got to do to make sure that we're not waiting a year, so.
Councilor Forsman?
I just echo a lot of that. I know I've gotten calls and emails from citizens today with fears and when are we going to get this going, and a lot of it is just, let's get it, let's get it going, and it's not so much the concern about cost, I haven't really heard that. Obviously, $3 million is not an easy pill to swallow, but we need to get it up and going, and they're just asking what can we do and what's holding it up. So, I think that the puzzle would be good to know that we're not just going to hold this off and wait longer, as well as a learning opportunity, I feel like, for all of us, and hopefully we can put some budget aside for future plans and long-term solutions. For right now, 20 years is a good timeline for us to be able to do that in the future councils and to be able to work with that still. I appreciate all your efforts and your team efforts, you know, it's a lot of hard work, and I'm glad to know that we're making some progress, and we're seeing some timelines to give to the public.
Director Johnson, ask one quick question before I ask Tommy to call the roll, and that is the number 20 that we've been talking about here. Is this a 20-year solution or is it a 20-year warranty on our product?
It's a 20-year warranty, so, yeah.
So, we could do something different well before 20 years or something, but the warranty on the product is 20 years, so it may or may not be a long-term solution.
Yeah, the concern with the Maju Tank that we referenced was it was a smaller volume and its expectancy, it was exposed to the sun, the contractor couldn't guarantee it would last more than three, four, five years, so that's why we did not want to spend a million dollars on something that really didn't quite fit our need and wouldn't last more than a couple seasons. It bought us time, it got us off the irrigation restrictions, but it's felt like throwing bad money after it, where this, where the manufacturer would warranty it for 20 years, gave us more assurance that this is more, more stable.
And, one follow, when we talked about that, that if we were going to avoid possibly irrigation restrictions, right, because timelines were never guaranteed on that original vote.
No, 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 that was, we were voting on a concept.
Yep. Thank you. I think that should be noted as well.
Okay, councilors, if there's no further questions, I'll ask Deputy Clark Brock to call the roll.
Council President Littkey?
Aye.
Councilor Towesley?
Aye.
Councilor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Councilor Schroeder?
Aye.
Councilor Forsman?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, councilors. Next up, item B, High Reservoir Repair, VR 701, Design-Build Agreement with IMCO General Construction Incorporated, Change Order Number One, Considering Approved of Change Order Number One for High Reservoir Repair, VR 701, Agreement Between IMCO General Construction Incorporated and the City of Lewiston for Phase Two High Reservoir Repair Improvements in the Amount of $2,442,000 and Authorizing the Mayor to Sign the Agreement. This is an action item, and again, Director Johnson, the floor, George.
Yeah, so this is the contract behind the emergency declaration that, I think I remember, the second to emergency declaration, we were bringing back to the council, this one's a little bit different than what we said, but here we are, bringing it before you for your review. We've already talked a lot about the details, I discussed it briefly Monday night, but essentially, as I've already said, taking the roof off the top, lining the, repairing the hole that's in the side, lining it, tying in all the pipes and the valves and all the necessary hardware, and overflows, and filling it with, and then putting a, putting a floating lid on top. That's before you, the IMCO proposal with the budget and the schedule is in there. You can kind of track, generally, you know, on, I guess, page 15 of 39, anticipated notice to proceed is today, so we are fulfilling our end of bargain on it. Mobilization starts tomorrow, begins onsite work on the 8th of May, and then kind of generally breaking down, there's the liner and the geotech fabric, and then the order of the floating cover. I've said it, I think, previously, I'll say it again, the critical path item on this project is the floating cover. If we can get the floating cover sooner and make sure that we have all our dark work done, we can get online sooner. If there's delays on the cover, that means we're later, and we are at the mercy of the supply chain. I will say, you know, IMCO was our contractor for the water treatment plant, they have, being a contractor, they have grown significantly in the last 20 years in Northwest, they have connections that I sure as heck don't, and so relying on their connections, I mean, they are the ones who came up with this concept, and so leaning on them, God bless them, they're doing everything they can for us, and so we appreciate their work, but there's only so much work, only so much you can do to get some of these supply chains worked out.
So, really quickly, just because I want people to understand why that floating cover is important and why we ended up in a boil order, and so correct me if I'm wrong, the DEQ is really who determines, and so the exposure to the outside air, which, if you're like me, I want, if I can't breathe, then why can't I drink the water, right? But that's their stipulation that when it burst and there was still water, right, we had a little bit of water in there, but we had to go to boil order because it was exposed to the air. The floating cover allows us to secure that so that we don't have a boil order. Correct?
Correct.
And I think that's a very substantial note for people, because on top of restrictions to irrigation, nobody wants to go back to a boil order either.
Yeah, that is, that's exactly it, that, you know, ironically, that that reservoir was built in the 20s, and I think the roof was built in 56, so it operated for 35 years or whatever it was, 30 years, as an open-air reservoir, you know, things have changed, and I'm not going to argue with it, people don't die of dysentery anymore, so we're grateful for that, but also that that is not a really negotiable standard with the DEQ, that it needs to be protected from the environment, whether it's birds, mice, chemicals, whatever it is, that is what we're after, is protecting it from whatever could be entered into the system.
On page 18 of this, on the FEW Proposal Design and SDC Services, it talks about the yard piping upgrades, it's the third bullet, yeah?
yard piping upgrades, it's the third bullet down. And, um, it says that it's going to be, potable water be drained and associated alarms and sensors to restore functionality and reduce future overflow risks. When I read that, is this basically the same stuff that was in the old reservoir that failed? Or is it different?
It is more, more modern. Um, there, there was modifications to the old reservoir. This is now just moving at it with a belt and suspenders kind of approach to it. You have multiple lines of communication and, and gauging. You have water level gauges, how, you have pump gauges, you have all those stuff. It's the same system that it's tying into, it's just newer. And given that this, what has happened at that reservoir, we want to make, I'm sure it doesn't happen again. So there, the design is, is incorporating in that, that we won't let it happen again. Thank you.
So to follow up on the DEQ comments, so do they have to approve our plan? Or, so would they expect the final product there?
The DEQ, so the other component on this, which I haven't said because I haven't had time, but is the, well, not, not today, but just generally, we have brought the DEQ in. And again, kind of think the question you asked about, how long would this take to, to build? Typically, you, you kind of do your own work on the side with the engineers and the, you know, and then you bring, then you take it to the DEQ. Knowing that we have such a, a reduced timeline, the DEQ has been very generous with their time to say, they have been participating in some of our meetings to just understand kind of the concepts that we're taking, taking forward in this and making sure that they're, they're with us step by step. So we don't throw something on them at the last day and say, we're ready to go. And they say, you didn't check this box. So, yeah, the DEQ is, is the ones that, that will green, they were the ones who greenlit us removing the, the boil order. And they're the ones who will say, you know, you're good to go to tie it to the water system.
And if, if I could just comment on that, um, because that was going to be my next question, to clarify, because I know that, um, both you and the mayor have, from the get-go, involved the DEQ, so that that wouldn't, within our power, be a hindrance in this plan. And I do appreciate that, that we've involved them immediately, just, again, there are the lines that.
And they haven't been in conference. No, no, I mean, they're literally in the building next door to us. And, and we, like I said, we've had. It's good for people to know that. And, and, I mean, those are the local, local folks that we deal with on a daily basis, not just this, but on other, you know, water, wastewater issues, which is why they're here. Uh, and then there's, there's others in Boise, and they may have, you know, the availability, availability to pull some first strings that we're also in conversations with. Sure, sure.
Can we go over just a little bit of page 16, for the clarification and assumptions? So a little bit explaining the, it's completely independent of the Lewiston ETBD.
Yep. That's the Water Treatment Plant Design Progressive Design and Build Project.
Yeah, and it talked about, um, sorry, it takes no responsibility for the remainder of the age of the reservoir. So just basically because of, can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so, so that was part of the original beginning, when we brought in that design team of, well, the IMCO, Design-Built Team of IMCO Sandtag, they, they were not, and they should not be held responsible, liability of, if there's any other deficiencies within the system that weren't identified, they're not taking, you know, liability. Their focus is to fix what has been identified in, in the engineering design, not something that hasn't been identified. So that's just a saying, saying there may be something else that's broken in there that hasn't been identified at this point. That's not our responsibility. There's no reason to assume that, but.
So in the case of this, then they're basically just, anything that they do, it's repairs that they do, they would obviously be responsible for, but nothing from the existing infrastructure.
Yeah.
That fails, that would not be on them.
Yeah. If, if you take your car to the shop because you have a bad transmission, they're not guaranteeing that your head gasket won't fail, but then you pull out of the parking lot. So it's too, yeah. This is what we're focusing on, this is what we're fixing. We're not saying there's anything else out there.
Yeah, going to a different shop. Yeah. Well, I just wanted to make sure I read that correctly, so that way, um, you know, I make sure I do my due diligence.
They're, they're building this, software, all of that, that's on there. It's, it's on, yeah, and I think that, yeah, that makes sense.
But the old is on us, essentially. Okay, thank you.
Uh.
For a motion?
Well, I was just going to, well, we've already talked about the price, the completion date, uh, the, where it's coming from. There, there's been a couple of questions about where, where the money is coming from. Essentially, when we had, if you remember back to the FCS rate study, the rate study recommended we start, there was debt service, so when we did that state revolving fund loan, we pay, we now have debt payments to the state revolving fund at a low interest rate. So we have to have a, a debt service portion of our budget and the reserve to pay for that. We have what, we created what was called an opportunity fund. And the opportunity fund was, we're going to put a brand-new sewer main down this road. The water main is 80 years old. We don't have money for it. We can, we can use the opportunity fund to tie that into it. And then we have capital fund reserve that was there for exactly this. That's all pulled together in one fund. There's general, I shouldn't say one fund, but that, those are reserves. They have different purposes, but in a time like this, we can draw from those. So generally, we're just short of $4 million in reserves. And so we're at just short of $3 million. So that leaves us roughly a million dollars in reserves. But that's pending, that's just within our own enterprise fund. We have, we have many conversations with the insurance, with the DEQ, state federal agencies, uh, and then we did receive the DEQ emergency funds. I can't remember what the dollar amount was, a couple hundred, a couple hundred thousand dollars.
And again, these are the, specifically this pool of money, like, we, again, cannot pull from other.
Can't pull from other enterprise funds. These are water enterprise funds.
Thank you. Because that was a, a big question, is why can we stop this project to do this project?
Yeah. We, we have no correlation to a courthouse construction. We have no correlation to a wastewater plant, uh, or a sanitation, um, or even a stormwater utility that doesn't have any money in it. That this is only a, a water, water enterprise fund.
Right, thank you. Fair question.
Kind of off the subject back a little bit. So once this is done, will it be back to the same capacity it was before the breach?
I don't have the design. I mean, it, I can guarantee it won't be four and a half million, because you're taking the roof off and you're lowering and you're putting a liner. And so it, it, I know it, it will have adequate capacity, but that capacity is probably, we needed a million, million and a half, and it will be far excess of that.
And we have a brand-new catalog that could refill it quickly, just not too quickly that we have another failure.
Right.
Probably too soon, but I think that needs to be said.
Uh, it sounds here too, in the contract, though, they'll be keeping, um, like constant communication, basically. So as far as weekly meetings, it says, keep me on the, on the down low.
Yeah, yeah. I, and I think we were, we just discussed it on Monday. Um, we're putting, uh, I haven't worked on this one yet, because I've been sent a contract, but we were already, for our own, for the irrigation restrictions. I, I think I said, I'm committed to try and get weekly or as necessary updates as to the condition of the, um, of, of water system as it reacts to the summer. Uh, and then I'm also committed to, you know, giving an update. I think that's going to be very valuable for not only my blood pressure, but the public to know, okay, there's people working there. Okay, here's the liner, that, that we can start ticking down this and showing, you know, we're, we're behind schedule or ahead schedule or on schedule. And here's some savings that we've experienced, you know, kind of giving them the play-by-play. Typically, people get bored when I talk about contracts and engineering, but I think this one, the spotlight is there. And so I, I will, I will give the information.
You've got the spotlight now.
I find everybody.
And I hope, I hope no one else has the spotlight for a while.
True, yeah.
They can have it when this is done.
No, I know. But I hope no one, I hope you don't need another spotlight somewhere.
Well, a spotlight could be positive. Maybe a win would be great.
Okay. But I want to say too, that I obviously have received several emails from concerned citizens today, and I appreciate it very much, and they have shared some ideas. Um, and some of those we've already pursued, some of them we have not. So I shared some of those with Congressman Fulter's office today, and he's actually going to make another call and check into some of these things. So we're not, uh, going to stop looking just because we have a, a solution here that will carry us through a little bit. We're still going to be looking for more longer-term, um, arrangements, including if there's any types of, of funds, you know, that we might be able to tap into to help you fund some. But all we can do is ask and keep looking. But I guess, I'm thinking Congressman Fulter's office for being engaged and paying attention.
Very good.
Counselor Littkey?
I, I want to echo that. I think that's fantastic. And, and just, um, I, I think our state legislators, um, they've said, you know, let them know. And I, I like to harp on them as much as possible. Uh, they're part-time, but let's make a full time at home. And so I think that, uh, I, I want to appreciate the fact that we have, um, a mayor that have immediately engaged at the state and federal level, that, that hopefully, um, because I think what we all know is that we have the money that we have available to us, right here in front of us. But I think historically, the city has not been, uh, for lack of a better term, privy to the, the, the knowledge of that there are state federal dollars. And I think that this has been something that, we haven't gotten that yet, but we're at least initiating that conversation. But as we build on this and try to improve that, we are seeking ways to bring relief to our residents. And I, I commend the city's leadership in doing so. And, and I have no problem reaching out to those folks as well. And I, I'm sure the other councilors are, that, you know, this is unprecedented. Um, and we can talk till we're to blue in the face of what we could have done, what should have been done in years past. But I, I'm very confident that we're moving forward correctly. And that we will hold to a solution. So I just, again, Dustin, good job.
Share the motion, Councilor.
I was going to let Towesley take it from me again.
I'd make a motion to approve Change Order Number One for High Reservoir Repair.
Second.
WR701, Agreement Between IMCO General Construction Incorporated and the City of Lewiston.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Towesley, seconded by Councilor Forsman, approved Change Order Number One for High Reservoir Repair, WR701, Agreement Between IMCO General Construction Incorporated and the City of Lewiston. Is there discussion? Attorney Clerk Brock, pardon.
Littkey. Council President Littkey?
Aye.
Councilor Towesley?
Aye.
Councilor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Councilor Schroeder?
Aye.
Councilor Forsman?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, councilors. Next up is, uh, ten, item three adjournment?
I remove to adjourn.
I'll start, I'm not taking it.
The move by Councilor Littkey, seconded by Councilor Schroeder to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by a sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post motion, very strong, your attorney, Councilor.